Okay, everybody, so we're gonna get this party started here. So let's make, uh, we're gonna open up the meeting for starters. We're gonna do a couple of very quick, small things. And then we're gonna get to what the whole meeting is about, which is what the plan is going forward. How do we see it, things working? And then we're gonna have tons of time for input from everybody. So the first thing we gotta do is look at the minutes from our last meeting and see if there's any changes we think we need to make on those. Carla or Jane, did you guys see anything in there?
Uh, nope.
I'm good. Carla, you good?
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept them as written.
I will second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, so the real important part, which is what are we gonna do? So just so everybody who's online and watching, first of all, thank you for tuning in and checking out and seeing what's going on. And please understand, you're gonna get plenty of time to ask as many questions as you want. However, we're gonna start just a quick discussion about are we going online or are we going remote? And uh, in order to get to that discussion, we're gonna hear from our district. You're gonna hear a quick thought from me. And then probably Tom Campbell's gonna jump in. And then I'm hoping it will set the stage for what the next step is gonna be. Okay, um, I think the best place to start is probably, Tom, do you mind just talking about our staffing concerns that we have in the district?
I'd be happy to.
Before we do that, the one order-
Yeah, go ahead, Matt, sorry.
One order business we needed to do before that was to elect someone from the Newfield-
Oh, sorry, totally forgot about that.
As a rep for the SAU Budget Committee.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys, um, so is there, uh, does anybody want to volunteer to jump onto that? If not, I will, it does, whatever works, it doesn't matter to me.
Be awesome if you could do it.
Carla, you with that?
That would be great, yeah.
Okay, so um, how about someone wanna make a motion to put-
I will make a motion that Tom joins the budgeting committee.
And I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Cause I was bored, so I wanted to be on another committee, so. Okay, so with that taken care of, uh, Tom, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Tom, uh, so I'll be brief. We uh, can report to you that we have four individuals at Newfields who have requested accommodations under either the Americans with Disability Act, the Family Medical Leave Act, or the Families First Cona Virus Response Act. So we're working with each of those employees to understand what is the accommodation they're requesting. Some have requested to teach remotely, some have simply requested additional supports and services if we were to be within the building at Newfield. So it's a relatively small number, but you're a relatively small school. And in terms of the, uh, the staff survey that was conducted, if I can just quickly grab Newfields. So we have a, uh, the staff survey that was done, eight individuals indicated that they would return remotely and, uh, sorry, vice versa. Eight individuals have returned, yeah, no, remotely, and 15 have indicated that they would return in person. That's the, uh, that isn't just teachers, that was a survey that was done with all Newton Field staff. In terms of substitutes, uh, we have a pool of about 75 substitutes across the entire SAU. We have surveyed the substitutes in terms of their, where they stand returning to work in the district. We have a, about a, I think it was about a 68% response rate. And about 43% of those who've responded indicated that they would like to take a wait and see approach, that they are not entirely comfortable coming into the building, if that was the case. But all of them were able to work remotely if that could be done. There's a, I think, a significant challenge to having substitutes work remotely. We would have to offer some additional training in the platforms that we're offering. So I think we would have a reasonable cadre if we were remote. And we would have a very small number of people that were able or felt comfortable in terms of substituting if we were within the context of the physical building. So that's just a sort of a quick overview of the staffing for Newfields.
Okay, so the reason I wanted to start with Tom is because I feel that when Dr. Ryan gave, you know, the joint board meeting and gave out his, all the reasons why he felt and the SAU felt as a whole, we should be going remote, I think that's a point a lot of people missed, that there is a staff issue, a staffing issue, not an issue with the staff, but an issue with getting staff members. Quick story, got a great email today from a friend of mine, Jenny Bishop. She said I could use her name, cause she was not offended by what I was about to say. And Jenny put this very long email together, and it was well thought out, and it listed eight different reasons why we should be going back. And they were awesome, they all made sense, everything, I agree with everything she said, why it would work in a small thing. Number two on her list of things was, if every teacher can come back and we have all the Paris. And so I called up Jenny and said, hey, what happens if we can't? And then we got into a discussion, and that's the crux of the problem. The crux of the problem is, we can't do some of these ideas because we can't staff. And that's the part David was saying, that's the part Chris has been saying, and other people have been saying. And to do so, to do it would be to compromise the education we're giving the kids, that's a definite. And it would, it just would not work successfully. I think that, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, that's pretty much the message you guys were trying to send the other night. Am I off on that?
No, you're 100%.
Okay.
You have to have a lot of things in place to guarantee the safety, given what we're working in right now. We don't have all of the items in place, including all of our staff members, including any additional staff members that we would need beyond our current complement. If we were to do some of what other schools are trying to do, which is reduce your student population in half and create some kind of hybrid or modified schedule during the day. It, we've, we've looked at it, we've tried, we worked through this with Stratum last night. Stratum board member said, there's no, she tried to poke holes in it, she tried to prove us wrong. And she said, I can't, I can't, I completely understand, you actually need more staff to work through a modified schedule with half of your students, given what you have, as well as more money to be able to increase the amount of transportation that you have if you're gonna begin doing double runs or triple runs, dependent upon the capacity on the bus. And so, so I think you've, you've encapsulated that well. Chris, please feel free to add anything in that I've missed.
I don't think there's anything to add, it was just, we tried many ways, and it was virtually impossible as Dr. Ryan and as Suzie has found out, which she would call me scratching her head, saying, I'm trying, I just can't. So her presentation tonight will encompass why we feel the plan she's gonna put forward is gonna be comprehensive for all students.
Okay, so the one thing I want people who are listening to truly understand, although I personally believe that what the SAU is suggesting is the way we should be going, it doesn't mean that your concerns are not part of the solution. And I have said to Chris privately, if we can't solve some of these problems for people, like the fact that people have to work, and the fact that we gotta get IEPs taken care of correctly, and children who are in certain, who have certain issues that need to have, you know, the live in-person thing, and kindergarten, what do we do there? If we don't do that, we're not doing our job, like, that's the key. That can we address those issues? And that's a lot of what Suzie's gonna talk about tonight and stuff like that. So although we're, I'm gonna open this up shortly, because before we get to Suzie, if you have questions about, I guess, the why of why we're going remote, but none of those change the, like, I should say, if your thing is, well, we need kids to be a live person, I, I don't disagree with you, but it doesn't change the fundamental fact that we can't staff. And if we can't staff, we can't go live, like, that's just the nature of the beast. So I just don't wanna get bogged down in things that realistically don't trump the fact that we can't staff. And to David's point, I'm not gonna be poking holes in this, Carla and Jane are more than welcome to. I have trust in what they're telling us. I have trust that the teachers who need these things and need to be remote are truly looking, because it's what they have to do for their family or for themselves or whatever. So I'm not gonna second guess any of that. Jane, Carla, do you guys wanna add anything?
I'm, I'm just 100% agree with you, um, you know, this is a hard situation, and it's really hard for everybody. And actually, I would like to start off too, for all those listening, to say thank you for all the parents who have reached out really positively to me. Um, I just, I'm so thankful that, you know, we're in this community. And part of being in this community is supporting each other. So I think we're in a really hard situation. You know, I have two little ones, so I'm right there with you, working full-time in a house full of Zoom meetings that get photobombed. So no one takes this lightly here. We all care deeply about the families in this town. But if it's, if teachers are gonna be at risk and, and don't feel safe, and we don't have the, you know, the, the staff to, um, give the, this, the children the education that they deserve, then I think the best option would be create a solid plan that can do that. So yeah, I'm right on board with you, Tom.
Yep, I'd echo all of those sentiments. I mean, we're here to see what we can do to make sure that all of these kids have as good of education as we can give them. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to do that. So thanks, everybody, for, you know, coming, thanks, everybody, for listening. And I mean, I'm looking forward to everybody's really constructive and thoughtful comments and feedback.
Tom, can I just add a comment?
Sure.
I said it Monday night, I'll say it again tonight, there's nothing that we can do without teachers, but this isn't all about staff members who need to be home. This is about being able to provide all of the safety and health guidelines that we're required to do to keep everybody safe, students and staff included, as well as the families to whom students and staff will be going to. And so while our numbers remain low in our community, which we, we know that, we've read all of the research, we've been informed of quite a bit of research by members of the community. This isn't something that the teachers have chosen to do. This is something that we as a team have decided is in the best interest of our communities, with a focus on learning in the safest way possible. Because we just can't add all of the elements to provide what needs to be the safest environment for all of our students and our staff. And so this is a, a combination of several factors, which we've been outlining all week. Staffing is one of them, but it's not by not wanting to be in school. We have people who just require the, uh, the remote access in order to preserve their own health and safety and that of their families. And so I wanna be sure that we're gonna treat our teachers well, continue to treat them well in our community, particularly in SAU 16. And I know that from Newfields, that's always gonna be the case. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that tonight.
Crystal, clear with me?
Yeah.
So I think what I'm gonna do is not open up the chat yet, cause the questions are inevitably gonna come around to what we're doing and plans and stuff like that. So let's just hold off on that for a sec. If everybody's okay with this, I was gonna have Suzie go next to talk about what the remote would look like. Some aspects of it, I know some is, is not necessarily narrowed down yet, I understand. But you, you, you okay with that, Suzie?
Yes, I am, Tom.
Okay, go right ahead.
All right, Jane, you're my Vanna.
All right, there you go.
Thank you, ma'am. So, um, I wanna echo what your school board is saying, which is, um, thank you for attending tonight. If we choose to go to remote learning, um, our goal is to provide the best remote learning program we possibly can while increasing student engagement and building strong relationships. And here's the plan on how to do that. Quick. Vanna?
Hang on, I'm getting there, getting there, there you go.
First of all, I wanna acknowledge that this plan was made in conjunction with the SAU leadership and with the input of the NIAA staff members in response to the current health crisis. Tonight's presentation is the backbone of what will be further developed with a full faculty in the coming weeks through interactive professional development. Quick. So this past spring, educational systems around the globe responded to an emergency call because of the coronavirus. Our local state at-home order forced us to provide emergency remote learning. And while we're proud of the impromptu work we did, we learned that equity, strong relationships, student choice, motivation, consistent learning platforms, and community traditions are all part of a successful remote learning experience. Quick. Thank you, Jane. When we consider what produces highly effective remote learning, there are really three components, which are relationships, deep thinking, and online learning. The stronger our connections are with each other, the more meaningful will be our work, more motivated we will be to do that well. We use online learning simply to remediate, reinforce, and enrich. Next slide. So the structure of our daily schedules will be consistent throughout the grade level to grade level. We'll have morning meetings, mid-morning stretch, lunch and recess, and end-of-day check-ins. They'll all fall within the same time slots across grades. There will be varied learning activities, including time on and off-screen. In addition, there will be large and small group instruction, as well as interventions for each subject area across grade levels. Choice and student agency will be embedded into our daily instruction and learning. The expertise in teacher instruction will be what grows our students' learning. Our literacy approach with guided reading, word study, read alouds will allow students to become stronger readers and writers. If we want our children to be strong readers and writers, then they need to read and write every day. And the good news is that the number one way to produce a reader is through their own independent reading. Kindergarteners can have sustained independent reading for 10 minutes usually. And often looking at a picture book while our, while our fifth graders might go 45 minutes or longer. When we do, yeah, the, so the good news about that is that that can be accomplished at home. Um, our reader, our read alouds, which we will do online, that really acts as a mentor text for students writing. Uh, so when a first-grade teacher reads something like Margaret Wise Brown, and it's rhyming, or maybe in an older grade where we talk about Twilight, Twilight, the book Twilight Comes Twice by, by Rob Fletcher, for descriptive language, the students can imitate that in their own writing. So tho- those are super important components that we'll have in our literacy. In math, we're really gonna further our growth in those eight standards, including how to teach students to make sense of problem solving and make models of math problems. So strong instruction will be the foundation of our work with your children. So here is what our typical day's schedule would look like. However, just remember that our specials won't all fall at 1:15 to 2 o'clock, because they need to, the specialists need to be at different grade levels. But they will be 45-minute blocks. The highlighted activities that you see are when your child would be on the computer for part of the time or potentially the whole learning block. Students will have daily access to their specials, art, music, library, and PE on a rotational basis. So everyone across the board will start at 9 o'clock with our morning meeting. We'll actually start with morning announcements with me before you go into your morning meeting block. Then from that 9:15 to 10:15, you'll see the first learning block, that might be our literacy, it could be our math. Then we, all across the school, have that 10:15 to 10:30 block, really just to get up, have a snack, a movement break, go run around. From 10:30 to 11:00 will be another learning block. And then that 11:30 to 12:00, lunch and outdoor play. And then you see that really from 12:30 to 2:15, there's a big chunk. And again, that does not mean that your child would be on screen that whole time. It just is, um, it includes that specials. Then from 2:15 to 3:15, that might be when students have one-on-one instruction. That could be when we have groups of students come in, but that's more of a flex time. All right, next slide. Thank you, Jane. So-
I'm so sorry to interrupt, I should've done, I should've asked earlier.
Yes.
Monday through Friday?
That is Monday through Friday, Tom.
Okay, thank you, that's why I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, cause la- you know, a lot of places last year went to, or at the end went to four days, with that Wednesday in the middle, this would be Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that.
It's okay. So, um, relationship building is more important now than ever, right? And in addition to our daily morning meetings and afternoon check-ins, we'll regularly connect with small groups and individual students. Later in the presentation, I'll go into the student and family orientation and our project-based learning in greater detail. However, we will provide social opportunities to build peer relationships. And these come in forms of lunch bunches, game times, clubs, and school-wide assemblies. We'll work hard to reimagine how many of our treasured Newfields traditions can be retained. Our weekly drop-off and pick-up tote bags of new materials will give us an opportunity to see each other face-to-face. I wanna pause here and take a moment to emphasize how important it will be to really keep our Newfields School traditions alive. Looking ahead, I plan on requesting the PTO to come, um, to continue with all their amazing activities that the students love and look forward to. It might just look differently for a time. For instance, I know pizza on Monday is something the students and faculty really enjoy. So a question could be, could we have Monday pizza through night throughout Newfields? How will we rethink our Halloween parade? How do we keep our Thanksgiving tradition? These questions will most likely be answered by the creativity of you guys as the community helping come alongside with me. And I wanna thank you in advance for all that, so that our children, and really all of us, can experience and look forward to those special events and holidays. All right, next slide, Jane. So at Newfields, we'll have school-wide project-based learning. These projects will engage students in ways that are deep and long-lasting, and inspire them a love of learning and personal connection to their academic experience. Think back to a project you did when you were a child. And I bet you could tell me a lot about how you went about researching, constructing, and presenting your work. Some of you might have been doing that at the 11th hour with parents pulling their hair out, but you remember it because it was meaningful. And so there are seven essential elements of design with project-based learning. And, and those are authenticity, student choice and voice, reflection, critique and revision, a public pro- a pub- a public product, challenging problems and questions, and then that sustained inquiry. So this, you'll, this year, we're gonna have monthly themes that all grades will be working on simultaneously. And then collectively, we'll share out our learning and celebrate these achievements. This will really go far in having that project, um, that the students can have their hands, just a hands-on project and really be invested off the screen, but embedded curriculum throughout that project. So, consistent online tools was a big hot button last year. It was frustrating as parents to have all these different, um, all these different platforms. So we're really happy that with Clever, we'd have a single sign-on platform. And then what we'll be using at Newfields, everyone across the board, K through 5 would be Zoom. That will be our communication platform for instruction in our social-emotional learning. CSO will be our students' digital portfolio that you guys, we've had that for a while. Jamboard and, and, um, graphic tablets. So one thing that we would like the board to consider is spending, um, for, for us to be able to purchase their $40 apiece digital whiteboards that just click right into your Chromebook. And it allows us in real time to be doing math problems, or working on our letter formation, or, um, working on our portfolio, then you can make it into a PDF, put that into CSO, and the interactivity of that is, is quite fantastic. And then iReady will be where we do a lot of our math assessment. Mystery Science really aligns with next generation. And then Tumble Books will take the place of Epic, which is our online books for students to access. So-
All right, one, one quick, one quick question since we're here. Do you have an idea of what the jam boards would cost us?
Yes, um, it's $40 per student, so roughly about $4,000.
What about the Chromebooks? Do we have enough Chromebooks for every kiddo?
We do, Carla, yep.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah.
So For the, I'm sorry, one more question and I'll make it a full three of us. For the jamboards and the Chromebooks, do we have to consider throughout the course of the year breakage, replacements, warranties, and all that other stuff? Just want to make sure that if we're going to be prepared for, you know, people having, you know, little kids having these pieces of equipment.
I think that's wise, Jane, to have some in our backstock so that that can be an easy trade-out. I know without a doubt people will try to take care of them and be responsible, but accidents do happen.
They do.
Yep. We are talking about five-year-olds having these, you know, and adults. So I should not just say the five-year-olds.
And if we're, are we going to supply each child with a Chromebook and potentially a jamboard versus them using their own devices that they may have at home?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. Before you leave this too, I wanted to state that we will, we recognize that not everyone is super-tech-savvy, and that is okay. We are all learning in this. We will have seminars online, ready-to-go for people, and in paper form, easy-access cheat sheets so that you do not get frustrated with how to access these things, because that is a real frustration, and I don't want parents to experience that.
So we're doing this for students and parents?
Correct.
Awesome.
Okay, let's go to the next slide. So those students with IEPs will have access to special education teachers and support staff to support their individualized learning and address specific needs. And then that next slide is that the school-based teams will engage with parents to identify those services and talk about that differentiated instruction along with a continuum of delivery options. There might be some students who will require face-to-face or intensive instruction or related services, OTPT speech, things such as that. Decisions will be supported by regularly collecting student data and progress monitoring. And evaluations, of course, will continue during this time. And those students who are on IEPs will be getting contact shortly by our special education team to start those meetings. So to kick off our school year, we're going to invite each family to sign up for an in-person or virtual, if they feel more comfortable with that, orientation for September 10th and 11th. That's that Thursday and Friday. And this is really going to be an opportunity for teachers to learn more about their students and for families to receive information about the curriculum, have an opportunity to ask any questions, and visit with all the faculty who will be on campus, which will be exciting for the children to see that. The orientation will be outdoors, and we'll follow safety guidelines, which will include wearing masks and social distancing. We have some fun in store on those big days, so we would love for you to join us on those. So please feel free to ask me or members of the senior leadership team any questions that you might have. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to lay out plans for remote and for the upcoming year, if you all choose that. But I want it to stay very clearly, please make no mistake, that we may not be going back to school how we are accustomed to, but that does not take away our joy or our excitement about meeting and working with your children. We really are excited about the upcoming year.
Susie, before you stop, could you just give a brief overview of the eight days of professional development you're going to be providing? Because you and your team put together a really comprehensive plan that I think is going to help parents understand that remote learning is different than online learning, that remote learning encompasses, you know, greater depth and knowledge and what you have planned. Because when I saw that, I was really excited about what you're going to be doing with your staff.
Thanks, Chris. So we do have eight days, which is amazing, and that gives us the opportunity to really look closely at the assessments that we're going to use so that we can use those tools as, really feel confident about zeroing in on each child's needs. So some of our PD will be on assessments. We are going to have some time set aside for traumas, being a trauma-skilled school. What everyone experienced in the spring is quite real. And we actually got to see in one of the professional development days that we had as a leadership team, a newsreel, 90 seconds of the newsreel of NBC from March 15th, April 15th, March, April, May 15th, and June 15th in a six-minute series. And it was astounding how visceral our effect was. Like, it was just so powerful to recognize how much we had gone through. And so to really name that, to understand that, to talk as a staff about what stresses our students might be coming in with. Then we're also going to have some team-building. I am new to the building and getting to know the staff. But in that, understanding what my expectations are, what our curriculum will be moving forward, we are having some professional development on our literacy, which is through a consultant who has a really strong understanding of Lucy Coffins and how to use that well. We will be spending quite a bit of time on our project-based learning and constructing those. Chris, you put me on the spot, so I'm trying to think of what else I had in there.
You have math with
Yeah, we're having two days' worth of math for our iReady and with the Vermont Math Institute. So quite a bit of curricular, which just goes to the point that I can't overemphasize enough, which is, we are strong instructors, whether or not we are online or in school. We will provide strong instruction. And that is a passion of mine, as well as relationships. I am super-excited to get to meet the students as quickly as possible. I know these are unique times that I am coming into this position, but already the staff has jumped right in. And I think that we're in really great shape to have a joyful entry. Lastly, I just wanted to say, I want you to know what my paradigm is and what I kind of hold near and dear to my heart, is that for those of you who have had an experience with Boston Children's Hospital, you know that any time that you are sent to Boston Children's Hospital, it's because of something quite serious. And they're the best and brightest, really, some would say, around the world. Just, and when you go into Boston Children's, you would never know how serious the situation is because of how they're greeted by the staff, by the doctors, by the nurses, because they come with a professionalism of "we've got you," and "this is a joyful place." And so I think of them often when I think about how we are going to re-enter this year with our students with all the positivity that we can wrap around them as we go through this very unique situation.
Susie, thank you very much. Presentation was, you know, spot-on. You hit a lot of topics. Carla, Jane, you guys want to ask anything before we move this to other people's questions?
I have one, and I know it's come up a couple times, but I never really remember if there was a clear answer. So the schedule, and this is just me thinking from my experience as a full-time working mom with same hours as my husband and a four- and a six-year-old at home. So the schedule, will that be recorded? Because sometimes it is impossible, you know, if there's no one else to support, to be there at those times. But after work, I would be able to go back and do those lessons with my children. So just thinking, you know, about other families probably having experienced a very similar thing. Just, you know, that was one of my thoughts around the scheduling.
So that's something that I'll need to spend some time with the staff on as far as there is no, though I know, Carla, that you were once a educator yourself. There is no substitution for that instruction. And I'm really hopeful that when we talk with families that if we need to find solutions around that, we can. But I do want to make it, I do understand that situation. I need some time to work on that.
Sure. It was just one of the thoughts, or one of the things that I know I personally struggled with. And for me in particular, because I had a younger one. So the one that was in Newfields can be good, but the little guy would just be on her.
You're not the only one, right? That is a very real issue.
Yeah.
And Susie, is, did I hear you correctly that you're going to have weekly pickups of materials that the kids are going to be working on during that week? Is that the plan?
That's the plan.
Okay. And how, I'm sure that you haven't quite figured out the details and how that's going to happen yet. Have you also been able to, you know, talk with the counselors and counselor and figure out how they're going to start determining if their interventions need to be made, you know, things along those lines? How that's going to be planned out? We've got a little more time for counseling this year, but I just want to make sure that we're taking advantage of as much as we can. These kids have been through a lot in the past six months. I want to make sure that we minimize the amount of time that these kids are, or the potential for these kids to, you know, go down, you know, brat holes and, you know, fall through the cracks.
So Jane, I appreciate you bringing that up. First, I have a couple thoughts about that. One is, a parent survey will go out to our community, and in that survey will be questions, open-ended questions so that parents can give us some feedback of where their child is. Some of them may be anxious, some may be very excited, some, you know, they could be all over the map. So that would be one of our first data points. Another part to this will absolutely be Tracy Alward, who is our new counselor. We will be using the tool DESA, which is a social-emotional tool, an assessment that their teachers can fill out that will give us another data point. And then, of course, interactions with the teacher and, quite frankly, with me to be able to see what kind of wraparound services that we need. It is not just our students who are 504s or who are on individual educational plans. We have quite a few students who will need social-emotional support.
Okay. Thanks. I want to make sure that we keep that in mind. It's so important right now.
Yep. And Jane, to that point too, you know, we will be doing lunch bunches. We'll be doing small groups, you know, that 2:15 to 3:15 might be a time that we spend with executive functioning skills, you know, just a whole plethora of how to make students feel comfortable again in this situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Susie, I have two quick questions. I have received some emails with concerns about kindergarten specifically.
Okay.
Okay. Parents are concerned about the lack of face time. Parents are concerned about that's the start of educating their child. You know, it's everything that makes absolute sense. Have given any thought to how the kindergarten especially can be handled so that some of these, you know, concerns can be addressed?
Yes. So I have reached out to several other administrators about how they are handling kindergarten. You are absolutely right that kindergarten is our first entry into the educational process, and we want to make that a really good one. As we progress and we get closer and we start seeing the success that other people have, because we are on a grand scheme in the nation, starting a little bit later, we'll be able to see if small groups of students will be able to come in, potentially, again, at that 2:15 or 3:15 time, in groups of three or four. That's a possibility. If there, if it could, potentially, we have beautiful property at Newfields. And so being in the shade outside, there are some possibilities that I would like to explore with our faculty over that. But kindergarten is very much on my mind as far as how we make that successful. Tom, I know, I mean, I'm hearing myself talk, and it's not as detailed as I would like it to be, but I'm telling you that it's on my mind.
No, and I totally understand. And I think, what I hope people do realize, ultimately, this all comes down to a level of trust. If people do not trust the three board members here, they don't trust the SAU. If they don't trust you, then they, you know, then, yeah, they're going to have major issues with this. I think if we can be honest with everybody, let them know, like you did there, how you outlined it, and the stuff that we're still working on. Towards that end, Chris or Dr. Ryan, this is really for you guys, and I know you don't have an answer to this. I truly do. I know when we open it up, we're going to get a lot of questions about childcare issues. Do either one of you guys want to address your thoughts on how the district, the SAU, is handling that concern?
Sure. I got it. We've been working for the last month with local childcare providers, and it's kind of morphed, because when we first started talking with them, it was about how could they support us for the five days of professional development when we switch the schedule? And now that, you know, full-remote is on the table, it's how can we support those families that are working and provide a place for families where children can go before school or after school for care, but also for instructional support? And so tomorrow, we will be on a Zoom call with local daycare providers, recreation departments, and the Y to talk about what that childcare center could look like. We've also had a lot of discussions with our principals about who would be students that would go to those childcare centers. And again, it's some of the the daycare centers around here, they have very little staff, but others have staff and space to support. So it's really going to be that community partnership of how this would look, and that's tomorrow's conversation. How can we do this together? And then how do we support those families that need it? So as I said last night in Stratum, once that information is available, we're going to present it to the community. How would you be able to sign up? What is the criteria? That's still being worked out, because once we are able to establish that, then we've got to figure out, you know, the cost. Because we all know that we don't want to add significant cost to any family in this time, especially if they haven't been working or, you know, the money is tight for any family. So it's been under consideration, Tom, ever since we've been remote. And for the last month, I can tell you that it's been something that we've been working on at the SAU. Once we get all of our plans done, we can then really dive in and commit much more time to get the logistics done, and then we will present that to all communities.
Okay. Jane, Carla, Chris, Dr. Ryan, I don't think it's hyperbole to say then that we are committed to helping people who have that as a major stumbling block in the whole go-to-remote concept, correct?
Yeah.
Carla?
Yeah, definitely.
So I just want people to hear that, because that is a huge concern for people. I get it. We all get it. I just want you to know, we are committed to making it work.
So
Standpoint.
Yeah. So in that vein, when would be, and I don't know if you guys have an answer to this at all either, so bear with me. You know, you want to present some type of solution or options to the community. And what frame is that going to be presented? You know, is it going to be in another school board meeting, which I don't think the next one's until You know, is it going to be in another school board meeting, which I don't think the next one's until September? But how is that going to be presented and how can people get that information? What's that, what's going to be that process? Or if you don't know yet, when will those directions be available?
Yeah, I, I don't have a definite way, Jane, to give it to you at tomorrow's conversation with everybody on a Zoom call. It's going to provide a much more clear path of how that will happen. I know that we can communicate out through, through Dr. Ryan's communications are there, but we'll, we will figure that out. So everyone gets the information at the same time and understands what, what those pathways will be.
Okay. All right. So I would say that. For anybody who might need additional childcare assistance. Kind of what, stay tuned and, and make sure that you're watching out on the, the SAU board and keep an eyeball on your email.
Would you also recommend like reaching out if you're someone who definitely needs help?
I would ask right now, since we don't have kind of what that criteria is, we can definitely take names and put it aside, but I won't be digging into it. And knowing until we hear from our principals, our communities, and then also from our community partners on where we can staff it and how it will be staffed. So again, with these plans, we, we need some time. And working with our community partners to get that done. So I would just ask for patience, but I would again, put out to the community, we have heard you and we are trying to assist you with, with that solution. So if you can give us time and be patient, we will get it to you as soon as possible.
Yeah, it just seems like numbers are important to know there, like people who absolutely have no options cannot make it work. How many people are, you know, are in our community like that? Because if it's, you know, two is very different than 70. So the more information we have as far as. Like not seeing a path to, to having the support they need. That's I think really important to just have a pulse on that.
With regard to communicating out, we're also adding return to school sections to each school's website. So you know, we have a return to school section on the SAU website. We're now working at the school level on the very specific plans for each of the schools. They're all going to have their own area as a landing spot for all of the information relative to. Any return to school plans for that particular school. So, so Suzie will be able to build up that page, starting with this presentation. With this video, any of the questions that are asked in the chat function will be turning into frequently asked questions. So we'll just continue to build so everyone can always go to the website to continue to see information.
Okay. I know we've been yapping forever here and I need to get to the questions. However, I think it would be a little remiss if we didn't hear from the staff. So Jody and Sarah, if you guys want to add something to this, I want anyone to think that this is being shoved down your throat or you haven't had a say in it. Or I think the people need to hear what your honest opinion is of these sorts of things.
The last couple of days, Suzie, Jody and a couple of other staff members. We all worked very closely together and have been working very hard to develop a plan that we are excited about. That we really feel that the community can feel good about. That it's going to look a lot different than it did last time around. I think we've learned an awful lot about what was good and what needs to be tweaked. And we are really willing to embrace the changes that need to take place. And just do whatever we can to help our New Fields School be the best place it can be for our students. So I feel really excited. Suzie's fantastic. She has so much energy and she just is such a creative thinker. That I think we're just very lucky to have her in the building during this time of, you know, a very unique situation. She'll be a great leader to bring us through this for sure.
Now I'll jump in and second what Sarah's saying. This was absolutely the past couple of days were a team effort. Nothing was shoved down our throats. We worked together very closely and, and heard each other and pushed back a little bit with each other from, from both angles. And it, it just worked out so well. So I feel great about it too.
All right. Well, thank you very much. All right. Mr. Dr. Ryan, if you want to open up the floodgates, we'll start getting to the questions. And please, if you have one, reach out, we'll answer it.
All right. I opened the chat function for questions from any of our attendees. I just want to let the attendees know that other attendees will not be able to see your questions that are posted. Chris, who is going to be reading the questions? Will that be you or will that be you, Tom?
I'll be reading the questions and then we'll be answering accordingly, I guess.
Perfect. So we'll be reading every question into the record. There'll also be a printed version of every question that's in the chat. And it'll be produced and put on the webpage as well, along with the minutes of the meeting, the video of the meeting. So all of the information that we're sharing tonight will be available to, to everyone. So.
Okay. So first question we have here is would remote learning create a more complete teaching schedule and a better choice? I'm assuming all over hybrid or back and full. Chris or Suzie, do one of you guys want to handle that one? Basically, I think what they're asking really is, is this really the best educationally for what? Or from a, creating more, I guess they're worried about the complete teaching schedule.
I'm just read it one more time. I was.
Would remote learning create a more complete teaching schedule and a better choice?
I'm a little confused, I guess, compared to what? I mean, the, our plan is that we feel that the remote learning, again, it's, it's not all online. It, it, Suzie talked about the project-based learning and the different depths of knowledge that kids are going to be challenged through this, through our remote setting. And we're using the computer as our tool to deliver that. We feel confident in the professional development and the guidance of Suzie that this is going to be a, a much different learning experience than our kids had in March. A much more complete, much more involved and much more engaging learning environment than we had back through March. And, you know, the teachers did fabulous in March. This is going to be definitely trumped up.
Well, next question, is remote learning 100% happening? It still does not seem quite clear. So I totally get what the question is referring to. We have not actually made a motion and gone on it. I think if you, I, I do not see an alternative, frankly. I think it's fair to hear what the plan is to answer some of your questions. We are going to make a motion at some point. I can only speak for myself. I do not see an option other than going to remote learning. Next question, could we create an opportunity, Suzie, this is for you. Could we create opportunities for each of the grades to occasionally get together in an outdoor setting with their teacher, class? So have you had any thoughts about that?
Yes. I absolutely hope that we can get together as classes. We'll figure that out as what is. What would be safe to, to do, but I, I absolutely agree that the more we can have face-to-face connections, not only with a teacher-student, but with peers for each other. That would be beneficial. I do want the opportunity to talk to the whole staff as far as what our protocols would be and how we feel comfortable with that. But Paul is right on with the more we can have that, the better.
Okay. So next question is from my friend Jenny Bishop, who says, hey, can everyone on here introduce themselves? That's a crazy idea, Jenny. I will call out your name because I'll just look at my screen and then people can introduce themselves and, you know, what, what it is you do. So Tom Hayward, chairman of the school board, Chris?
Chris Andruski, assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction in the DESA for, for New Fields.
Suzie?
Suzie Griffith, principal of New Fields Elementary.
Jane?
Jane Walsh, school board member.
Molly?
I'm Molly O'Keefe. I'm the director of finance and operations for SAU 16.
Michelle?
Hi, I'm Michelle Larson. I'm the assistant director of finance and operations.
Carla?
Hi, everyone. Carla Vanderhoof. I am the vice chair.
Esther?
Good evening, everyone. Esther Asbell, associate superintendent here in SAU 16.
Helen?
Good evening. I'm Helen Ryska. I'm the SAU 16 director of student services.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi, everyone. David Ryan, superintendent of schools.
Jody?
Hi, I'm Jody Bennett and I'll be teaching fourth grade at NES this year.
Dr. Kelly?
Hi, I'm Bobby Kelly. I am the town health officer for New Fields and a parent of a rising third grader.
Nancy?
Nancy Hoyer. I'm the minute taker.
Ellen?
Hi there. I'm Ellen Ryska, assistant director of student services.
Sarah?
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Rosenbleth. I'm the fifth grade teacher at New Fields Elementary.
And last but not least, the good-looking Tom.
Hi, everybody. I'm Tom Campbell. I'm the assistant superintendent for human resources.
Okay. Next question, what can parents do to best support remote learning, the school and our teachers?
That's a great question. I really appreciate it. One thing that you'll be receiving as a parent is how to, how to set up a learning space for your child at home. What the expectations will be. So the students are clear, parents are clear. You know, we really want their best effort when they go to school. So setting up a space, a consistency, we know for a fact that consistency and routines are paramount for our students. And so to have that same space to brush your teeth, to have eaten breakfast, to, you know, be, be fully clothed. And, and show up at your learning space with your materials, that's, that's fantastic. That's one thing that you can do right off the bat. You know, definitely as far as the school aspect is concerned, the more parent surveys that are completed and returned to us, the better. That just gives us such great data. And, and then I think for our teachers, I think just really clear communication, that, that line of communication staying open. So that we are constantly reflecting and refining our practice to make it better for, for our families and our students. I love that question.
Yeah, it's a great question. Suzie, this one's for you, but I already know what the answer is. What time will parents be picking up, dropping off materials? I ask as school, I work as it is opening and I won't get back until 3:30, 4 o'clock. So clearly you'll have a method for people who can't fit that schedule, whatever it is.
Dr. Ryan already told me that he would go around with me for those parents who can't drop, come and pick up materials. He and I will go out and, and personally drop it off, but don't make us do every single person.
Okay. Next question. It's a great curriculum question. Will any of the curriculum from a in quotes, normal year have to be sacrificed to accommodate for remote learning?
From my perspective, absolutely not. In fact, I would suggest that we're, our curriculum is going to be stronger moving forward.
Suzie, can you provide examples of what remote learning? That isn't online could look like?
So that's really our project-based learning. When you have a project that the students are really engaged in. That won't need screen time. They can be off doing their research, doing the actual physical part of maybe constructing something. Creating songs, creating how they are going to do a presentation. All those things might be offline.
Okay. Next question, if parents by majority elect to open the school and staff it, what happens? Parents can't. Elect by majority to open the school and staff it. That's part of what our role as school board is, is to decide what is best with the help with the SAU and stuff like that. I understand if people are absolutely, you know, against this and they have an issue with it. I mean, eventually you'll vote me out. You'll vote other people out. And I, I don't mean that flippantly. I mean, there isn't much, we are deciding as a group what we're going to do. So there really isn't anything that a upswell of parents is going to do to change that frankly, when we're done. Next one was just a quick comment that they love Jamboard. It was a very good tool for live learning, worth every penny. I can second that, not that I've ever used it, but my wife has and loves it. How will teachers communicate to students for scheduling class meeting assignments? Email messaging, impromptu meeting? I guess about communication there, Suzie.
Yep. So every morning, if, if you remember that slide that we showed about the schedule. Every meeting starts, or every day starts with a morning meeting. That will really outline for the students what the day looks like. And again, I cannot emphasize this enough, our routine and schedules. Just will be so consistent that families and students will know what to expect.
Okay. Next question, how much flexibility is available to parents and students as they adjust to this? And here's their example for some subjects like math and reading mandatory while there is more leeway for subjects like specials.
I would push back and tell you that all of our subjects are important and that we value all of them and that. Those are opportunities, especially for our social emotional learning connections when you're doing things with your peers. Those are really important as well as art or music that I don't want to devalue those at all. My expectation would be that, that we would go to attend all of those classes.
Gotcha. How about, I mean, let's, let's be honest, their big concern, I'm sure, is just the nature of flexibility, right? And I don't think, I mean, isn't that one of our greatest strengths because of our numbers that we can be flexible? So if a parent's having issues with a kid, having problems with this, I mean, it's a phone call. It's a conversation.
Yes. Um, I, I think it's that. It's having conversations beforehand and knowing that we need to have a plan in place of maybe why, why. There, there's a probably a. Underlining condition of maybe why that can't happen. And so that communication, but to do that on the front end versus the back end of, of letting us know that.
Next question is really more of a comment. They would really like to see academic lessons recorded. They, it is impossible for working parents facilitate a full day of remote learning. Also now comes from my children being on computer all day. I would love to see more flexible access to the curriculum. Suzie, I, one of the things I think this, and I've heard this from people, do you foresee the child being on the computer the entire day?
No. And I don't want our children on the computer all day. That's why you'll see that schedule and breaking down. When you see a learning block, that learning block time might not be that entire time. It's just scheduled as a possibility, but we would do 20 minutes of probably some type of direct instruction, then go to smaller, large, or small groups. But our students will not go from, from nine o'clock to two o'clock without a break on the computer. That is absolutely, we know for a fact that that's not good nor healthy for them. So I'm very, very aware and so is senior leadership as far as age appropriateness of how much time, screen time students should have on. Their learning and, and we're going to work really hard at minimizing that, but being really effective when we are on screen.
Okay. Is this plan going to be for the school year? As a full-time working mom with a corporate job, it will be impossible to navigate. I was asked this question earlier too about, well, does that mean we're on for the full year? I don't think it means anything other than we're starting. Now, I don't know what the future is going to bring. So at the same time, it, it could be. I have no idea. I don't think anybody does. But I'm hoping that with the plan we, that's been developed and some of the resources we have financially. That heaven forbid if it does go all year, that we can help people who have this concern to make it work all year. Right now, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, we're just trying to come up with the best plan to start the year. And like everything, we reassess over time. Anybody want to add to that?
Opening in this manner is the safest way to do so, so we can phase back in and keep an eye on conditions, working with our public health officers, our, our medical doctors, our community partners. And that as conditions change, we. our public health officers, our medical doctors, our community partners, and that as conditions change, we can be adaptive and make changes also. We want people to think of the building as a learning and counseling center that we're going to be using to our advantage. And if we can return students safely into school, properly staff it, with everyone feeling safe to do so, then that's absolutely the direction we're going to go in. Nobody wants this to go one day, never mind one year. But in order for us to be able to commit to how we're opening with a focus on learning, remote instruction is the easiest way for that to happen with the most amount of work from everybody involved. So, you know, coming from that perspective, we just want everyone to be patient. We're not saying that this is going to go on the entire year, but we're going to continue to assess conditions as the beginning of the year and ultimately in through the fall happens.
Okay, Bobby, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I totally agree with what Dr. Ryan was saying. Just one of the things I was going to suggest to the board to consider, it doesn't have to be decided on tonight. But one of the things that the governor's recommendation for a return to school did recommend was that each individual school district come up with a COVID-19 liaison that is a part of the school community, whether it's a teacher, a principal, a school board member, somebody that is tasked with being in constant communication with folks like myself in each of the towns so that we can have there be, in addition to everything that the SAU is doing, I'm sure, but have each individual sub-district within the SAU have a pulse on what's going on, how things are progressing. So again, that's just something to consider. I don't think it's mandatory. The language, I think, is a should in the recommendation, but I'm happy to work with that person.
Okay. Why don't we, I think it's a good point. Let's bring it up at the end, and then we'll address that right then. How's that? Next question. How will attendance be taken and what will be the expectation?
Attendance will be taken during those morning meetings.
There you go. And the expectation would be, I'm assuming, the same as if we were live, like, show up to school?
Yep, you're correct.
Now, I know the next question somewhere down the line here is going to be, okay, they don't. I mean, like anything, if it's an attendance problem, I mean, clearly, you're going to work to find out what the cause of the attendance problem is and try to work to fixing it.
Yes.
Oh, my God. And I think I almost got on that one. How would it be handled for a child who cannot adhere to the schedule due to parent work schedule? Would there be consequences? Would the curriculum be able to be completed by the child and parent at night or on weekends?
So I think we alluded to some of this with, we would take case by case, and certainly if those community care centers, if that's an opportunity for that particular family to access that, that would be one of the options. We will be working with each family to make sure that they have what they need. We know this is an incredible situation of trying to juggle a lot of things at one time. So, but we do want to educate our students. And so we'll go to great lengths to make sure that each family has what they need.
Okay, next question. Will kids have homework on top of the day of remote?
So I think that that is close to the question that says, will project-based learning be projects for kids or projects for parents, which being a parent, I completely I can completely relate to. I hope that our our projects, or I don't hope, my expectation for our projects are that they are age appropriate so that students are able to accomplish them like any of their other work, and that is independent as much as possible. We don't want, we're not, parents should have their learning as much accomplished from the school system. It's our students that we want to see grow in their learning. So as far as homework, I hesitate to give too much of an answer to that because I have not spent too much time with our faculty, but it would not, parents are juggling so much that what we do during the school day is probably what we will have as our work for the day.
Okay, next question could be for Dr. Ryan or Chris. Is hiring staff, since others have opted out, an option? Has this thoroughly been explored?
If you don't mind, I think I'll jump.
Oh, Tom, go ahead. Sure.
Thanks, Tom. So I first want to be clear that no staff at Newfields has opted out. We have some staff who have requested accommodations because of their own medical concern, a family member's medical concern, or they have childcare issues, meaning the town that they live in, their school is either not opening or is open remotely. So I just want to be clear that no one is opting out. We have some folks that have requested accommodations. If, and I can't speak to Newfields specifically, but in some of our other districts, we have had some teachers request a leave of absence. We have listened and learned and have granted leave of absences for those individuals, and we will indeed hire a replacement staff member for that person. So we are looking at our staffing every single day. We're working with our teachers, with our paraprofessionals, with our support staff to provide support for them. And if that means they need to be remaining at home with their family, and we have to hire additional staff to to work in their place, then that's what we'll do. That is no different than any other time of the year, COVID or not COVID. We will continue to do that.
Okay. Just a quick comment from Kristen Johnson. As we work to support our students during this time, the IDN has resources and grants to help support mental health for children. If you aren't familiar with this program, I'm happy to help. So anybody who falls into that category, please reach out to Ms. Johnson, and she can help you out with that.
So wait, it might be helpful to let everyone know that Kristen, who Kristen Johnson is. Bobby, did you want to take that one?
That's right, because she's on the speaking end of this. Dr. Johnson is a parent of two children in the school district in town. She is a local pediatrician. And she is, I don't know, she's the liaison, the medical liaison, has been working very closely with Dr. Ryan and the whole staff over the last several months on making recommendations from a medical standpoint. So she and I, our colleagues, work at core physicians over at Exeter, and we both actually are happy to provide any information about the, it's called the Integrated Delivery Network, and it's a long story about it, but there's lots of resources that come with that group.
Thank you.
Next questions for Dr. Ryan and Chris. If parents choose to opt out of school this year, how should this be communicated with the school, and what does reentry look like afterwards in the future? I would also add to that, if you want to add in anything about like services, they may, if Helen wants to add to that, about that, the IPE stuff, IEP stuff that could be involved in that too?
Yeah, I'll turn that over to Helen because it would sound to me like, it sounds like a homeschool because there's not an opt-out issue.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah.
Can you just try to pull up that question? I don't know which one. Could you read it again? I'm sorry, Tom.
If parents choose to opt out of school this year, which I think in agreement, it would be that they decide to go homeschool because that's the only way you could do it. How should this be communicated with the school? So that's the first part. What does reentry look like? And then I threw in the next part, which is for parents of students with an IEP, does that affect anything?
So the first part of the question is, they would simply need to send a letter to the SAU office to, attention to Ellen Riska is actually heading up our homeschooling, and indicate their name, date of birth of the child, the address, and that their intention is to homeschool. It's actually that simple. And it's a one-time notification. If they choose to stop, then they do need to notify us that they have stopped homeschooling. And then they need to re-enroll their child at the school because they actually will be unenrolled at that point. If the child is a student with disabilities and is on an IEP, Individual Education Plan, homeschooling does not provide services for students who are homeschooled. The whole idea of special education is to give the child the services they need in order to access the general education curriculum. And since we aren't delivering that general education curriculum, it would be hard for us to know what services to offer to help them access it. Similar to related services, a speech pathologist can't give their service to a child to help them access general education when we aren't giving the general education.
Okay. Does that work for kids who are in kindergarten too? Does that also apply? Okay.
Homeschoolers can access some extracurricular time or some classes at school if there's space, if they are offered during a regular school year, like PE or art. And it can actually access materials, if extra materials are available, as long as all students at the school already have the materials they need. There are some of those conditions and accommodations for homeschoolers, but services from special ed are not an option.
Okay, thank you. Will there be a condensed version of the schedule for parents that will be working with multiple kids each day? So Suzie, have you given any thought to, there's three kids from the same parent in there, and then there we go.
Yeah, I think, Tom, overall, we've been looking at putting a schedule together that can be common and consistent for all students. That's across all elementary schools so that there's downtime throughout the day. If there's individual families that are struggling, we would ask them to reach out individually to the schools so we can, again, as you alluded to in a previous question, what's the basis behind that issue, and how do we support? And Suzie and her staff will find a way or communicate with the parent to assist them with whatever their individual problem is.
Okay. How will we utilize our paraprofessionals? Will any of them be laid off?
I can give some ideas on that.
Yeah, I can't see as a board us wanting to have anybody lose a job or lay anybody off. I think we would, you know, ask that everybody who's presently employed stay presently employed. I would think online, there's going to be plenty to do. I don't think that would be a problem, but Suzie, or Chris, or Helen, anybody want to address that?
Well, we'll use our paraprofessionals. Oh, go ahead, Esther.
We're working with the schools for the community care centers, so paraprofessionals that are able to work directly with students. If they're not utilized at their school, we certainly will try to pull them into those community care centers to expand those services for those tier-two, tier-three students that would be at the school sites. So I fully anticipate that there'll be many options for pairs to support students remotely and/or direct.
It is one area we learned a lot about last spring, is how to integrate the paraprofessionals into the general ed setting as well to support students. Zoom has this cool thing, like breakout rooms, that you can, the parent can listen to the lesson with the student, and then the student kind of go to a breakout room and talk about what happened and talk about the instructions, what they need to do, give some reminders about lessons from earlier, and then shoot the student back into the Zoom with everyone else. And there are some really cool options that we can use.
Okay, next question. Will parents have access to assessment data?
So we will have parent-teacher conferences, and in that, we will definitely allow, we will share where students are and the growth that needs to be made. That's just part of healthy communication between the parents and the school.
Okay. And as I get to some of these questions, I know they're coming in, in a sense, I'm reading them after we've already answered some of this, but I definitely will touch on them real quick. This one is, since this is a Monday-through-Friday remote plan, how will this work for kids who cannot log on daily because of parental issues, stuff like that? What happens to a student's grade or attendance if they're not complete the schedule every day? I think both of those fall under two things we've talked about, which is flexibility, which Suzie's absolutely said she's going to, and I think also, they also, one of them falls under the whole community care point and how we're going to try to help with that aspect of it. So I think that's where the answer will be. Okay.
I just want to point out that I do, I do want to work with parents. I'm a working parent. I completely understand the sentiment of sitting next to your child and getting onto the computer. So that is not something that I take lightly, and we will find solutions for that.
Okay. Next question. Suzie, probably yours. Does remote instruction have to be all or nothing? And their concern was, are there any discussions around what they suggested was teachers who are comfortable coming back, returning in person, kind of a hybrid thing, which we've already agreed upon is not going to happen sort of thing. But to that point, you know, do you see how there might be some sort of working in of in-person at the school? Can you talk to that?
Absolutely. We're hoping that that 2:15 to 3:15 time at the end of the day can potentially be a time that's utilized for that. Also, just flexibility with these community care centers, there's possibility that a teacher might be able to go over to that center and work, myself included, with students. So we are very much open to that.
Okay. So Helen, this is a question for you, but generally speaking, and the question I'm about to ask, you'll understand why I'm saying this. If you have a specific question about a specific IEP issue, you really need to make sure that you are in contact with the district and contact with Helen or the school and address it. Because I'm going to talk about it real quick here, but some of these are an individual type of thing. If a student is supposed to prepare for the whole school day, how would that, how would that work?
Yeah, and I get, go ahead. As I said, it's definitely a very individualized need, and I would need to know more about what is the role of that parent for that child? Is it behavioral? Is it social-emotional? Is it physical access? Because in the remote learning setting, some of those concerns might be mitigated by not being in the school environment or in a classroom full of children. We have found that for a lot of students actually did very well with remote learning. So I would definitely bring that to the attention of your case manager, and they will be reaching out for IP meetings very soon anyway, to kind of review services and how they'll be delivered and what the expectations will be for the remote learning period.
Okay, we have a question. Again, it's a flexibility issue, Suzie. It's about completing homework. Will there be an expectation of every assignment being made up if a kid is six? And the real cross of the question is, is there flexibility for missed work?
Absolutely. This is not about making this difficult for people. We are all going to team up together to the best of our ability to make this work. It's, I really can't stress that enough. It will be the teacher reaching out, myself reaching out, and seeing how we can, you know, work together to make instruction possible for the students so that they can be learning on a consistent basis.
So it's fair to say that if anything involves flexibility, that is the one thing we are going to be as a school?
Yes.
Okay. So this next one, I'm just, this is the only time I'm addressing this type of a comment. Travis Thompson did a great job of this the other night. He's a far more patient person than I am. The conditions could not be better. How much better do you want them to be? The discussion we're having about going remote has nothing to do with the conditions. They have everything to deal with, supporting the teachers and the fact that we aren't going to be able to staff. And I just hope people really understand that this isn't a political thing. This isn't a, I believe, anything about the COVID sort of a thing. It's strictly about a staffing who's driving this. And that's what's making these decisions in the long run. So I hope that helps. That's the last time I'll be answering that thing. Okay, Suzie, you wanted just a quick address. I think this person missed it. We talked about it earlier, just in case. What do you, can you give any examples of what like off-screen stuff might be for a child? This one's, they're specifically looking at kindergartens, but, you know, is there something there that you could give? This one's in, they're specifically looking at kindergartens, but you know, is there something there that you could give as an example to help make it?
I do think that we will come up with, I want to be careful and cautious because I need to speak with the staff and be respectful of that. However, I can tell you that there will be things that my hope is that the, it would be, there would be information provided that parents could, a kindergarten parent could look and see this is a time for independent reading. Or this is a time for them to, to work on their letter formation. This is a time to get out the magnetic board and work with my letters. As far as parent and hand over hand work, there might be some of that that's going to be negotiated between the parent and the child at that point.
Okay, Suzie, question for you. Do you plan on keeping the tradition of posting updates, photos, important information on the Facebook page?
Yes.
Okay. Someone's asking if remote learning is not determined to be for a full year, where is the plan for in-person? The, Dr. Ryan, I'm assuming the plan for in-person will be developed as we review and figure out when it's able to happen due to staffing and other concerns.
It's been a lot of work originally on how we were going to go back in person. That work would continue. That's what we've been saying all along is our goal is to continue planning for an in-person experience and how we're bringing students and staff back into the building. That's not going to stop so that as we see opportunities to do that, we're going to take them.
Okay, someone else asked about whether or not staffing is the whole reason. That is the driving reason, folks. That's it right there. Next up, will there be an opportunity for office hours that parents can reach out for guidance if the child seems to be struggling?
Yes. Yes, at the top of the day from 8:15 to 9:00 would be an opportunity to do that. And at the end of the day from 2:15 to 3:15 is another time that that's a possibility. And always telling is an option.
Chris, Dr. Ryan, will you be looking at tuitioning in children of teachers to reduce the problem of teachers not being able to teach in new fields if their own children? Okay, I think unfortunately, I don't see how that matters if we're not, if we're going to go remote. But will you look at tuitioning in children of teachers to reduce the problem of teachers not being able to teach in new fields? I get it. Okay. It's my understanding that the reason, you know, there's a problem with staffing is not just revolved around that aspect of it. Anybody want to chime in on that?
It's, it's, it's a combination of factors that we've talked about. Usually, as you know, Tom, and certain people here understand that when we start talking about personnel issues and reasons why people make choices that they need to make in order for their own health and safety with regard to their condition at home, that remains a confidential issue. What we know is that we've asked our staff what their capability is and their choice, their preference, based on the conditions that exist and based on their life, their lifestyle and their homes. They've given us that information. We have that information and we've therefore determined that we're unable to operate any type of in-school experience right now that would meet all of the health and safety guidelines as combined with other issues that come up with dealing with COVID. So a reduction in the number of students, ensuring that you have ample PPE, cleaning supplies, cleaning materials, cleaning equipment, transportation to and from. A hybrid model that many people seem to want is going to, it's going to create the exact same problem of parents who are working during the day as it is on a full remote. And so I know Mr. Andruski has run numbers on additional costs as well as what we would need to do if we were to try and work in any kind of hybrid. I also want to submit that a hybrid model actually reduces the amount of direct instruction from teachers and students. It eliminates, it almost puts in half the opportunities for students and staff members and teachers to connect. So in reviewing all of that, and I'm talking about across the SAU. Because again, on Monday night, it was established that we were working with all of our school districts across the SAU. That these are the factors why we can't do what many people on this chat function want us to do, why we've chosen to go in this direction.
Thank you. I utterly agree with everything you said. Dr. Kelly, do you want to say something?
No, sorry, I was just stretching.
Oh, that's fine. I just thought you had a question or something. Here's a question. Do homeschoolers get a tax refund?
No, they don't. Everybody, regardless if you have children or not, pay property taxes. And then if there are any savings at the end of the year with remote learning, if we're not in the building, that will go to offset the amount of taxes that need to be raised to support the subsequent school year.
Is there a deadline for the intent to homeschool? I don't believe there is, but.
You can file it anytime during any school year.
Okay, Chris, there was a question about, and I don't think we can. So I think you already mentioned it, but we really can't elaborate on what the community care point is going to look like or any of that stuff today, correct?
That's correct. I'm going to turn it over to Esther. I mean, she has information too, but if there's anything to add, Esther. But I think we've shared as much as we can at this point.
Okay, the next one is just a comment about, and Suzie, this is just something to think about, okay? There are some parents out there who would like to be able to get information, let's say like lesson plans as early as humanly possible. As a teacher, I know that is not always possible. You know, you can make a plan for the week, but it doesn't mean come Tuesday, you're on that plan anymore. So it's just something that, you know, the more you can do that, which I'm sure the teachers will, they're all very good professional teachers, that they will. A question here about how will you determine which students require tier two in-person support and how will this be communicated?
So I'll work with the staff again and those parent surveys that go out. We need to collect some data on that before we make a determination of who our tier one, tier two and tier three students are.
Okay, next question. How low do our numbers need to be when we will be comfortable opening? I'm assuming the low, I, how low do our, I'm not sure if that means the teachers or whatever. I don't know the answer to that question. Does anybody know the answer to that question?
No, we've maintained from a personnel perspective and from the SAU perspective that we don't currently have that information. Dr. Kelly may have some insight on that.
I think that is one of the roles I think of a conversation between folks like myself and the COVID-19 liaisons and folks on each of the individual school board members. Because there's going to be some public health information and data that evolves and will get, move us in a better direction to potentially have that be more of a consistent option throughout schools in New Hampshire. But then at the same time, we still have to deal with all of the personnel issues that Dr. Ryan and Dr. Campbell already mentioned. So it's, it's the perfect example of a complex adaptive system like Dr. Ryan mentioned before. We have to, even if we get things more stabilized from the public health standpoint, we then need to then flip back to the, the school district and its structure to see if it can support where we're at from a public health standpoint.
Okay, I just want to share with you a quick conversation I had with somebody that relates to this. And I really think somehow people are missing this. I was at Irving and I got two guys going off on teachers. They don't want to work, but they want to get paid and blah, 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 blah. And I think people miss the point that there isn't, we don't have a staff member that doesn't want to work. That is not the issue. They're not asking for a get out of jail free card. I know for a fact in my district, not ours, that I have a teacher whose husband is battling cancer. They cannot take the risk of getting sick and bringing it home. And so if a teacher were to say to the SAU, to us, I can't do that because it is unsafe under these realms, whatever it is, then we trust them and we have to back them up. And that's why this isn't about anything than really that. And I think it's sad that some people don't understand that what we're trying to do is support the people who need support. At the same time, we're going to try to support the parents who need support.
Yep.
That's the key. And I really think we can do that to help you out. But there is no, oh, well, don't count them and let's rehire people. I mean, Tom, you tell me, are there a ton of people out there that we could just, oh, we don't need you, we'll just pick you? Like, that would not work.
It wouldn't work, Tom. And I also think people have to understand that we have work agreements and collective bargaining agreements that we have to work within the framework of those working conditions. And that's an important fact to consider. You know, our subpool, first of all, is low on a good day. It is now lower because many of our subs happen to be retired individuals who happen to be a little bit older, who happen to feel uncomfortable about their age and becoming, and becoming ill. I also want to add that throughout the SAU, we've had 144 staff members, not just teachers. Teachers, administrative assistants, paraprofessionals who are falling into the category of the example that Tom just described. These are very valid, very concerning issues. And our staff have rights and protections under the collective bargaining agreement, under the Families First Conon Virus Act, under the ADA, under the Family Medical Leave Act. These are all laws that we're responsible under the Department of Labor to follow. And that's exactly what we're doing. We are following them as, as, as we're charged with doing.
Okay, so next question. Hey, surprisingly, it deals with staff. So if all staff agreed to return in person full-time, school would be good to go in person? I have no idea.
Under what model?
Right. I don't know, honestly. So I totally feel, and I'm sure my other two colleagues feel the same way. I feel for the people who are upset that we are going back to remote. Some of that is due to the fact that the last time we did this, and Suzie already talked about it, it did not go well. I don't know of a district that crushed it on remote learning. And I think that drives some of this, you know, the fear of what's going on. And I totally get the issues with childcare and all the other stuff that goes with it. But I can tell you, we're going to address that as a district. I think people have been very forthright and open about this. I don't know how else to try to get people to understand that we really, as a collective group, I think people are doing everything humanly possible to help. And if you need help, please reach out. Talk to Suzie, talk to Chris, talk to Dr. Ryan, talk to Helen, talk to anybody. No one's going to turn you away if you have, if you need help with this. I think I'm speaking for everybody here. The other thing too, Helen, I don't know if you want to address this, there's definitely comments about IEPs. And I know we say, call Helen. Is there anything, I mean, parents had some really tough times when we went remote with the IEPs.
Yeah, I think depending on the nature of the students' needs, some were more successful than others. We do have quite a few success stories from remote learning and people got really creative. But we're definitely taking a whole fresh look at that and we will be offering some in-person services to students, getting them into the building for one-on-one services. We're working together in each school team to determine, you know, who are the ones who struggled the most for whatever the reason might be. Some, some of those services are just hard to access remotely, physical therapy, occupational therapy. Speech therapy, actually, there's a very big market for teletherapy for speech. So that has become more of a thing, but not so much in our districts. But you know, we are figuring it out. But we will be looking at who we can bring in and who's going to do that service with them and how we're going to set that up. You know, it's another place we could potentially use some of our paras to bring kids in for a period of time and access some of their services, get some access to their remote learning class with the para with them right there at school for a little bit. And then return home and finish up their day. So it's going to all be based on need and, you know, can we get the right staffing there to do it? And if we need help with finding that staffing, then that's one of my jobs is to reach out and find those people that can assist the new fields community.
And again, we'll say it again, if a parent is having issues with what's occurring, they need to self-advocate.
Absolutely.
Yep, and I can tell you, having worked in special ed before, that's the key. You self-advocate, you will get what your child needs.
Right. We only know if you tell us. You know, I'd love to say, I know it's happening with all over 700 students on IEPs, but I, I don't. You need to tell me.
Right. I got one last comment here. It's from a friend of mine, Melissa Toby, who I said very nice things about. She just wanted to make sure that it was clear that her daughter totally crushed on remote. So my comment was not that we all didn't do it well. Generally speaking, is kind of where I meant on that, that people had a hard time with it. There's no doubt about it. Okay, I think we're almost done here. So this is a follow-up. I'm just going to read it. I'm not sure my question was fully addressed, but how are tier two students across the district getting support equitably? It was stated on Monday, the district is still figuring out space, but not sure the parent survey is the way to go. And you feel there is a student data that should be looked at to determine if falls within tier two?
There is. And I already spoke with Jen Moser today about who is in our tier two slots. That parent survey really is just to get more information, but we, we have our tiers, both three and two.
Okay, so before I shut down the conversation on this, Melissa wanted to correct me to say that the teacher crushed it and that I'm a goose. I'm not sure what that means. But anyways, okay, so I think we've pretty much answered everything that we can on this. So does anybody want to add anything before we start to make a motion here?
Tom, can I answer that last question? Do teachers know about each incoming child's strengths and weaknesses?
Sure.
We are going to connect this year's teacher with last year's teacher to go over what went well, what didn't go well. And I plan on attending all of those meetings so that I hear a thorough report on all of our students.
Are we doing, sorry, this might be a follow-up to that. Or is there a plan or a thought process to do something similar for potentially incoming kindergarteners? Because we don't have that, that, that information, I'm assuming.
That's correct. I'm, I'm going to be working on that, Jane. The whole kindergarten is a, is a big issue for me to get my hands wrapped around.
Okay, thanks for looking into it. And I think there was another question about, you know, the new students.
For the new students, if they're not kindergartners, I'll, you know, the teacher and or myself will be calling other, sending school and collecting information that way as well.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to accept the plan as offered by Suzie on going remote and how it will be done.
I will second.
Okay. Any discussion on it?
No.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so three, zero. So that's going to be the plan going forward for new fields. Please, anybody listening who's upset with this, by all means, anything we haven't addressed, please reach out to Suzie and the district to make sure that we can address those things, okay? All three of us want to make sure that this goes well, clearly.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And just know, you know, we know that people are going to have struggles. And we know it's, it's going to be hard, you know, hard work. And it's, I guarantee you, Suzy's nodding. She's like, it's hard work for them to do all this planning too. So I appreciate the teachers, you know, I, I support you guys in this. And any way that we can help as a board, you know, let us know. And families out there, we support you too. So I think I can speak for all of us when we say we, we absolutely care about the families, the children, the teachers and the, and the community here in new fields.
Yeah. I can't echo that enough. I mean, as a parent with two students in two different schools in the district, it's going to be rough. It is not an easy situation for anybody to walk into or anybody to continue. And our expectations for this year are going to be a lot higher. We've got a lot more planning than we did in March. And I mean, I'll reiterate with Carla and Tom have been saying, which is, let us know what we can do to help. That's the, the best thing we can do. Let Suzy know, let Chris know. We will do our best to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward and, and really making this as a good learning environment for not only the teachers, but the students and the parents.
So with that done, I know we want to go back to Dr. Kelly, what you had talked about. So let's have a discussion about that. You want to bring that up again?
Looks like he's frozen.
Nope, there, oh, I got it.
I'm here. Hi. So yeah, do you need me to clarify what the, what?
Yeah, please. I just, honestly, with all the stuff, I've just zoned out on what that one was. That was, seems like light years ago.
Sure. Yeah. So the idea is from the recommendation from the state is that each district identify a person who's going to be a COVID-19 liaison, who is, whose job will be to both get a pulse of how things are going within the school, both at the student level, at the parents' level, teacher level, and the board level, and then have a communication with me as the health officer of the town, so that I can provide them with any updated information from these calls that I'm on regularly. And then also, if and when there are any, when, when a decision is made at any point to return to school in-person, then there's going to be a lot of monitoring, obviously, and, and protocols that are going to be, to be in place. That obviously ultimately the school board is the ones charged with making those decisions in addition to the teachers and the principal. But it's just an added layer of communication that I think is going to be a helpful adjunct. It can be the principal. It can, I guess theoretically, it could be somebody on the school board. It doesn't have to be a person who doesn't have another role, but I think it is important to have somebody who has that as their identified piece. I can read you the piece from the PDF, although I think that might have caused me to freeze before. So can I try again?
Yeah.
I, I, I'm fine with it. Like, I totally think what you're saying is legit. Chris or Dr. Ryan, Esther, anybody want to? Talk about that?
We, I talked to Bobby previously, and it's really hard to locate one person based on, you know, the, what, what's going to be coming in. If it's a health issue, we feel like our nurse, Ms. Merrick, would be one of the best people to talk to. If it's a logistical problem within the school, it'd be Suzy, you know. And in reality, I mean, I would, I would be involved in those conversations. So, you know, I talked to Bobby and say, how do you identify one when we're dealing with this? I probably have the most flexibility to speak with Bobby and then speak with, you know, Suzy and not to put anything more on their plates. But that was just the conversation we had initially with his role as the health officer and passing information that, that I can collect it and help disperse it and then bring those people in as needed, where I have that flexibility and pretty much daily communication with Suzy as it goes right now. So just a thought, and that's what we had discussed, so.
Makes sense to me. If you're good with it, Bobby, if you, that thing makes, if that makes sense to you.
I'd really not want to put anything more on Suzy or her staff. And I think.
Why? What's she doing? She got something to do now?
Just a little bit. And I'd be, be very open to working with Bobby. He's easy to get in touch with. And we've had really great conversations. So I would, I would, I would be glad to serve in that role and help out in any way possible.
Perfect. Okay. So we don't need a motion for that, do we?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Does, there's nothing else on the agenda, I believe?
Do we have to take a motion to spend the money for the Jamboard equipment?
I don't think so. I think she, the money's in the budget. They can, she can, I mean, yeah, as far as I know, right, Chris? I mean, she can, she wants with it in a certain sense.
Yeah, it's under the policy.
Well, within reason, Suzy. Don't get crazy. But no, I think it's a great idea. And we do, I mean, financially, we're in a really good place. So if the kids need it to make this remote, you know, go the way it's supposed to go and be positive, I'm all for it. No problem at all.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody got anything else they want to add to this meeting? Dr. Ryan, this may be the shortest one you've had in a while.
As a matter of fact, by about six minutes it is. I appreciate that record time.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, if there's no, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I'll third.
Everybody, thank you so, so much. I know how much time and effort you guys are putting in on this stuff and it's greatly appreciated. Teachers, staff, everybody, every year today. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.